9 o'clock and we're in the Senator hearing room for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start that meeting with a pledge of allegiance, so would you please join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we have an interesting meeting this morning and we're going to start with a presentation having to do with the United Way 2014 campaign. Randy Frankie, Executive Director of United Way, and Jolene Kelly from the Board's office is here, and when you're ready, go ahead and begin. It's good to see you, Randy. You're making me a little nervous when you're here, but it is good to see you.
Thank you.
So, good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Jolene Kelly. I'm the Communication and Administrative Manager for the Board of Commissioners office, and we're here today to talk about United Way. We will talk a little bit, I'll let Randy talk about what the community campaign is this year, and then we'll talk a little bit about what Marion County is doing. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Randy Frankie, United Way's Executive Director.
Good morning, Board members. My name is Randall Frankie. I'm the Executive Director of United Way, who is out of the Valley, serving Marion County in the Anne Hill County, and thank you very much for allowing us some time on your agenda this morning to talk about the 2014-15 campaign for United Way. The Annie Casey Foundation put out their 2014 Kids' Count Book recently, and Oregon ranks 35th in the nation for education according to their analysis and the benchmarks they look at evaluating them. There's a couple of the benchmarks I'll mention because we're using them as well. Your 4th grade, your 4-year high school graduation rates, I think I said that right, 3rd grade reading scores, and absentee are 3 of the 4 points they evaluate. And we don't do too well on those, but that's not a surprise to us as we've been looking at our communities and talking to people, which is why we've chosen changing the odds this year. The idea is that we want to change the odds for all children, to give each and every one of them an equal opportunity to succeed in school and on in life after that. Research verifies that high school dropouts are more likely to be arrested or have a child while it's still a teenager, both of which incur additional financial and social costs. According again to the Annie Casey Foundation, every student who does not graduate from high school costs our society an estimated $260,000 in lost earnings, taxes, and productivity. That's over a quarter of a million dollars per dropout lost in our community. We know that reading proficiency can be a make or break benchmark in a child's educational development. We know how to prepare children to enter school. We know how to support children who are not reading at grade level, and we know how to empower parents to be a positive influence in their children's lives. We also know how to engage our youth so they can succeed in school and graduate on time. These are the most recent high school graduation rates for Marion County schools that come out of the Oregon Department of Education. I would note that there are some issues around the high school graduation rates, particularly from those high schools who have adopted additional programs to help kids graduate. Many of them, those kids will graduate in 5 years instead of 4. Nevertheless, I would suggest that these rates in today's society, in the needs of our businesses and the need to create a strong economic and healthy environment in our community, we need to have higher graduation rates. And I don't have the 3rd grade reading scores on these particular slides, but no matter what you think of the high school graduation rates, where we are with 3rd grade reading right now really needs a great deal of improvement. And as the Annie Casey Foundation has noted, 3rd grade reading comprehension is one of those key predictors to those kids successfully finishing high school and going on to further education, be it trades or 2-year college or 4-year college.
Mr. Chair, if you may. Go ahead. Mr. Frankie, thank you. It's interesting that Woodburn's 58%. I toured the farmworkers' housing unit there. The students that are growing up and going to high school in that unit are 95% in Woodburn. It'd be really interesting to see some of the things that they are doing, obviously as a community in that housing unit, that they're outperforming the rest of the school district. I just saw that stat there and it was pretty amazing.
You bring up an excellent point, Commissioner Cameron. I think, again, when we say we know what we need to do to help, I think that's an example. They're getting great results. I think our challenge is how do we bring those proven practices to scale so that all children in our 3 counties have that same opportunity to succeed? Because there are successful programs out there like that, but so far the challenge is to get them to scale so that we cover more of their students. Again, we know that dropping out of school is a process. It doesn't start in high school. It starts much earlier, and we also know we have the opportunity to change that trajectory. We can change those odds. Often the trajectory begins at home where reading is not emphasized. It continues when the child does not have the skills needed to start kindergarten, and it worsens when the child is not reading at grade level in 3rd grade. It becomes inevitable when that child becomes chronically absent from school. The same factors affecting the child's success in school also affect their health and eventually their financial stability as adults. We must encourage and enable parents, families, and caregivers to play their indispensable role as co-producers of good outcomes for their children. The bottom line is, we know what the problems are. We know what needs to be done. The question is, do we have the will to make a difference? And that really is the charge of our campaign of changing the odds. We want to work with schools, community organizations, business, faith to community, as we have with our other collaborative grants, but in this one, really focus on those early years. The Board of the United Way has approved a new program. This is the 3rd grade reading scores I mentioned, 4 out of 10 3rd graders in Marion County did not read at grade level. That's not a good sign for the future. And what they've created is a goal of raising an extra half a million dollars to focus on birth through age 8, on school readiness and early grade reading proficiency. Again, working with a coalition of different organizations. It undoubtedly will be site-based. We know where the schools are that need the most support and help with kids coming into the school. And again, I would emphasize for us, this isn't about the school's performance. This is about how we prepare children to enter school ready to learn. Because the schools are doing a lot of work across the board with the students once they get there. But we need to do a better job of helping parents and others prepare those kids to be ready when they enter school. And that's again really what the change in the odds are. This is our new goal for this year. It is an aggressive goal. I make no bones about it, but within that large goal is that half a million dollars to focus on early grade reading and school readiness. Just a reminder of some of our current partners. As the Board well knows, we've gone to a process of funding collaborative grants where we have 2 or more organizations joining together, focusing on the same outcomes, using the same measurements, working together to improve outcomes for all children and families in our 3 building block areas, education, health, and income. I will say that as I talk to executive directors of these different organizations, the best proof I have of its value and how it works is when an executive director tells me, "We like the new process and we would not go back." We see better results for the people we're working with by working with other organizations and bringing more resources to the table. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the Presence Leadership Circle just quickly this morning. These companies throughout our community have joined the Presence Leadership Circle, and I use their membership dollars to help fund our campaign expenses so that your individual donation isn't paying for the flyers, isn't paying for the brochures, or pens, or pencils, or the advertising we're trying to do this year to raise the awareness of changing the odds. That money is coming from these businesses who generously donated to the cause. And you too can make a difference by joining Changing the Odds Campaign. Thank you for your time.
Sorry about that. Thank you very much, Randy. I've been involved with the Marion County campaign since 2006. I had just been with Marion County for a few months when I helped on the first campaign. And just as a point of reference, I went ahead and polled what that first year's totals were. So in 2006, Marion County employees raised about $8,500 for United Way of the Mid Willamette Valley. I'm very proud to say that as of last year, we raised just over $24,000, and that was a 7% increase from the year before. And so we've really made a lot of progress with this campaign, and we've really done a great job, I think, of educating our employees about the needs in our community. And that's really what it's about, is meeting the needs of the community. I had the opportunity last year to serve on a couple of funding panels with United Way, and in doing so, you get to see a lot more of the applications that come in. And so the difficult part is when you see how many worthy causes there are and the outcomes that they're trying to achieve, and know that only about half of them will get funding. So that really kind of helps renew my energy for this campaign so that we can maybe meet more of those needs in the next funding cycle. So for our campaign this year, today is our official kickoff, so October 15th, and we'll run our campaign for about a month. November 15th, or excuse me, November 14th will be our last day to turn in forms, although if there are a few more that come in after that, we'll certainly make sure they make it to United Way. We always try to make this a fun event for our employees and try to, you know, infuse some different raffle prizes and fun events and things like that, and we've done a really good job of doing that this year. So we have a couple of our committee members who have already been out finding donations for us for raffle prizes. So we have a number of local restaurants that have donated prizes. We have, let's see, photography, a family photography session, a golf basket, so all kinds of really, you know, neat, fun things for employees to do. We're also trying to plan for the last day of our campaign, kind of take from something we do in the Board's office, our Pizza Friday, and try to make a building-wide Pizza Friday and do it as a fundraiser for this particular campaign. And I also wanted to just really quickly mention, our Wellness Committee is also planning a fundraiser, and so they've done for a couple of years kind of a soup cook-off, a healthy soup cook-off, and this year that will be in support of this campaign. So all the proceeds raised from that will go towards this campaign. So while I've been involved with this for 2006, I certainly haven't been involved in this alone. We have a number of department representatives and co-chair that really do all the work in the departments to put this campaign together, and I have a few of them here today. So we have Julia Alpernis from Finance, who is our co-chair, Michael Ott, who I think is hiding in the back for Housing, and then we have 2 representatives from Health, Duhey Luna, and Letty Vega. So these are just a few of the people in our departments that help us put on this campaign annually. And thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Go ahead if you'd like.
Well, thank you for coming, Randy. Great presentation. Big hairy audacious goal. And I know that early childhood has been a passion of yours for many, many years. You were one of the many, or the first outspoken people for early childhood way back in the 1990s, before it was really politically correct to be in that camp. So it's exciting to me to get to see this come to fruition in our community through United Way, and I want to thank you and all your staff and volunteers for all the work that they do. And Jolene likewise for Marion County, excited about our campaign this year, and hopefully we can get each department energized around it. And if there's anything, I was just thinking that probably we ought to be doing a presentation at Department Head Meeting coming up in a couple of weeks so that... And you said our deadline was November 14th? Okay. So when did, have we kicked off yet?
This is it. This is our kickoff.
Right. So that's, yeah, it seems like November 1st. That's kind of short. So our 14th, so maybe we can extend it just a little bit so that we have time for departments to get going with their activities. So thanks.
All right. Do you have anything? Well, I would, Randy. You, what did you say that Oregon was? I just didn't hear you right.
35th.
36th. 35th. There was a, it's a kind of a litany thing, but I was seeing in industrialized nations like the United States was kind of last in scholastic output, I guess you'd say. And then you tell me Oregon's 36th, and then Marion County's like the bottom county of Oregon. Where are we at? I mean, it's getting serious. This isn't a new issue with me. I tried to work on it, oh, 8, 9, all these years since. Probably didn't accomplish too much, a little awareness, and I wish you the best to really get under it and make a difference, because everything you said is exactly how I feel. Not only for the community, but for the individual themselves, you know, success rather than floundering. You kind of have one shot at life, and we want to give them the best start we can. So I wish you the best of luck, and we'll try to get the county behind you. And I know, Jolene, pizza does sound good always. All right. Anything else?
Thank you.
No vote. Thank you for coming and the best of luck. Our next items, public comment. We do have 2 people signed up. They're signed up to address an issue we'll be dealing with during this meeting, but I'll go ahead and... Oh, well, not yet. The first, if you'd come over to the desk there on the side, the first is Todd Call, and if you'd give your name and address, and then what you'd like to tell us. And if you'd speak right into the microphone. Thank you. Because I don't.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Todd Call, and I'm the owner of Phoenix RV Park at 4130 Silverton Road Northeast. And a couple of weeks ago, I saw an email come through regarding the hearing today to expand the noise ordinance in Marion County, and I would like to kind of give you a little update on how the ordinance has worked for us since it was adopted. It took about a 30-day period of kind of everybody understanding what the ordinance was and how it was going to affect our business or their business and how to comply with it. And we worked with the Marion County Sheriff's, which is, I give an A grade. They've been extremely responsible to this ordinance and to our needs. And I can tell you that the noise ordinance, as adopted, has dramatically improved the livability of our RV park as far as our travelers coming through from all over the country. Our complaint rates have gone down almost to none. We do have, once in a while, that the establishment may get a little carried away after the hours, but the Marion County Sheriff's have addressed that. And so I would encourage an expansion of that noise ordinance, and I'm not sure, I think you're encouraging going to extend it or looking at into the urban areas, outreach out of our areas. But I just want to tell you, it's been a success. I appreciate, you know, working together and solving a problem. I think it's going to be great for Marion County on years to come, and both for business and for residential. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming back. The only thing I'd add, just for the audience's interest, we did pass this ordinance in the urban growth boundary, just primarily around Salem, but now we're talking about extending it out countywide. And so we're happy it's worked the first time without being two owners on anybody, and hope it has the same results around the county if we approve it, and I suspect we will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Question for...
Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have you had any interaction with your neighbors, the business that was, you know, the problem here? Have you talked to them? Has it impacted them in any way, do we know?
We have, I have made several attempts to contact them after the noise ordinance took effect. We were supposed to have a meeting, never got a call back from either the owner of the establishment, or of the business, or of the building. So I've had no contact with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, and then next is Lynda Nein.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Lynda Nein. I live at 2596 Court Street in Kaiser. I was here at the early July meeting, and I want to thank you for considering outside the urban growth boundary. I'm going to borrow from a man that spoke that day. It's wonderful that we live here in the United States where we have the opportunity to make our own business, or, you know, work for others, whatever is our choice. The problem comes when someone's business and the noise they create disrupts so many other people's lives, specifically sleep. But, I don't know, I just hope that you folks will give us the same laws, rules, that you've given to the other people. Thank you.
Thank you. The next items are consent calendar. I think Commissioner Carlson, at least they say, here to lead that.
That's what I heard. All right, so, Mr. Chair, we'll move today's consent calendar. Under Business Services, Human Resources, approve recommendation to adjust salary range upward for human services trainee and election board workers. Under Finance, approve a quitclaim deed conveying real property located at 2600 Holiday Drive South in Salem. Under Health, excuse me, approve amendment number 2 to the agreement with Oregon Family Support Network to add $46,235 for support to families and direct caregivers in the Marion County Health Department RAP demonstration project, and approve amendment number 1 to the contract for services with Salem Hospital to add $78,654.24 for the Health Department to provide mental health screening services. And under Public Works, schedule adoption of an administrative ordinance granting zone change comprehensive plan amendment conditional use, case number ZCCPCU 14-003, Portland General Electric, Clerk's File Number 5687 for October 22nd, 2014.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, so moving to second, approve the consent calendar this morning. Any further discussion? I hear none. Then all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have 4 action items this morning. The first is to consider ratification of Marion County Juvenile Employees Association collective bargaining agreement for July 1st through 2014 through June 30th, 2016. Amy Rose Fish and Fay Fagel, I think over there, if you would. Good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, I'm Fay Fagel. I'm the juvenile director for Marion County.
I'm Amy Rose Fish, and I'm the interim Business Services Director. So we're here this morning with the tentative agreement with, we've come to with Marion County Juvenile Employees Association, otherwise known as MCJEA, and requesting ratification of that agreement that would expire then June 30th, 2016. We spent quite a bit of time on this agreement, really focusing on clarification, so there's a lot of language in there, as you see, that is really more, no change in practice, but more just updating and clarifying so that it's really clear to employees and to everybody involved who have to implement the contract, what the language means. I will point to a few items, though. In Article 8, Section 6, I believe it would be page 11 of the agreement, we have updated as we have in the other bargaining agreements, the changes to the Oregon Family Leave Act that now incorporates, one of the events that can qualify for the leave is bereavement, and so we've integrated language into the contract to allow us to be able to, anytime there is a bereavement situation, if they qualify, obviously, we would follow the law. If they do not qualify for Oregon family leave, then they would still have the maximum of 5 days that the contract originally allowed. In Article 10, Section 4, on page 15, we discussed the employees' health insurance, and the cap will remain at $1,346 for the remainder of this contract. However, if the plans, the renewals come in at a greater premium rate of higher than 5%, then there will be an opportunity to reopen this section only of the contract. And with that re-opener, there will be an opportunity to bring one non-economic article to the table as well, to give both parties an ability to do some negotiating. In Article 11, Section 3, under Wage Adjustments effective August 31st, 2014, there would be a pay increase of 2.5%, and then effective July 1st, 2015, there will be a pay increase, COLA, of 2% to the members of the unit. And this unit has approximately 40 employees, just for the record. And those are the major changes that we have made to the agreement. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Are there questions? All right.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we ratify ratification of the Marion County Juvenile Employees Association collective bargaining agreement for July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2016.
And I'll second the motion, just to make a comment that we had the opportunity to go through this at a management update meeting and to look at all of the changes and get our questions answered there. So it's not like we're so brilliant that we know everything at first blush, but we've seen this before and want to appreciate the work of the Business Services and Fay and others in getting this contract through. So, thank you.
All right, so moving to second, to approve ratification of the Marion County Juvenile Employees Association collective bargaining agreement. That gets to be tough. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have an annual event, one that I enjoy. We consider approval of a proclamation designating October 19th to 25th as National Hands and Words are Not for Hurting Week in Marion County. Tamara Getch, Pam Middlestetter, excuse me, and Pete Teller here. Good morning.
Good morning.
I like to call you Tammy, but it's always Tamra. What's the official? Let's get to the box.
Well, my parents have named me Tamra. I can be called Tamra, Tammy, so whatever.
All right.
As long as you're polite, I'll be there.
Now I've got an issue, but go ahead.
All right. So, for the record, I'm Tamara Getch. I'm the Marion County Community Services Director, and I'm pleased to be joined here today with some important community partners who are active in helping our community gain a greater understanding of the importance of being helpful, keeping hurtful activities and words out of our communities. And it's just great to be able to see the length of time that this campaign has been used in our community with great success, and I'm just really happy to be joined by our partners here today. They have all the fun things today, so I'm going to kick it off to them. Okay, thank you, Tamra.
Now, you're missing about 30 kids. You want to explain that? Is this part of the United Way program and stressing education?
I apologize for that, yes. After the longstanding history here of bringing students to this event, we're terribly sorry that we weren't able to do that. For the first time, I wasn't able to garner funds from my school year this year, so I'm operating without any money. My apologies, sorry.
Thank you so much for meeting with us. We just want to take a few minutes of your time, because we know your agenda is really full, and tell you a little bit about the Hands Are Not for Hurting program. This is a project, it's Hands and Words, actually, and it's a project that was established in 1997, right here in Salem, Oregon, by Ann Kelly. She founded it right here in our county. She founded it right here in our county, and it's been going for 17 years now, very active and very powerful. It's basically dedicated to educating folks about violence, whether it be by our hands or through our words, our deeds and actions, and also to teach people that they have a moral and legal right to live free of violence. I have a little bit of a personal, um, deep understanding of this. I worked for the justice system for over 20 years, serving victims of violent crime, and 11 of them, I served right here in Marion County as the district attorney's victim assistance director, and so I'm very partial to your county, and I will tell you, you're a fabulous place to work for. So with this firsthand knowledge, I was excited to jump on board with this project because it is established and it's wonderful, and it's very dedicated, and we are trying to teach folks at all levels that anger is a feeling, and how you act out on it with your actions and abuse, if you're abusive or violent, violent in any manner, that is a choice. And it may seem very simple, but it's incredibly important. And this program, the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting program, starts out at the very basic level, from infancy on through up to the oldest citizens in our community, again, teaching and giving, um, information to how to live in a violent-free community, and I know we all want that. I know it sounds incredibly, um, maybe, um, like I'm not being realistic to say that we can end violence, but I believe each of us, one person at a time, can make an impact on, on violence, especially in Marion County. The Hands Are Not for Hurting, Hands and Words, it started out just being Hands. The Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Project actually is everywhere, you guys. It's in the world, everywhere. It's in Russia now, it's in Croatia, it's in all over Europe, it's in Sweden, it's being used in all 50 states, it's in Mexico, it's in Canada, and that's just a few of the places this message has spread through this wonderful project that was founded right here in Marion County. I wanted to talk a little bit about the impact of violence. I got this this morning from the Justice Department. In the state of Oregon, between October 2013 and October 2014, which is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, 22 individuals were murdered, just in the state of Oregon, and that's a really chilling, to me, statistic. We've got a real epidemic here, and programs and projects such as the Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting is making an impact. It may seem like a simple pledge that we're asking to take and to be a part of, but it's a very powerful movement. Thank you.
Again, at this point, we'd just like to mention that we've provided you with a packet, some prepared comments that kinda kick off the year. Are we, the 17th Annual Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week, you also have your Purple Pledge hand sheet that you're welcome to trace your hand on and display as you'd like in an area that it can be seen, and again, we've given you an opportunity to have our wristband and lapel pin, or a pin that you're welcome to use and wear proudly to indicate your support. And so at this point, if it's appropriate, would like to lead all of us in saying Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting.
All right.
Please rise, and let's all raise our right hand. I will not use...
I will not use...
My hands are my words...
My hands are my words.
...for hurting myself or others.
For hurting myself or others.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
Other questions?
No, just make a statement. I know my wife has been involved with latchkey programs in preschool, and she's been using this for several years, and she loves it. It's a, it's a great thing, the kids get really excited, and I know this month, as we have been talking a lot about domestic violence, it's Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Marion County, you talked about 22, we've had three, three of those here, and having Randy Frankie here in United Way, and if we can make a difference, youth, maybe we can break that cycle as kids get older. It's a, it's a sad thing, but thank you for the work you've been doing. It does make a difference in our community.
Thank you. There's many different ways that a community, and a county, and specifically, as you three, the commissioners, can use this project, and one of them is being modeled right now in Klamath County. It's also in, um, I'm trying to think, there's two other places that are, Glendale, California is using it, and, um, anyway, there's one other, oh, it's in Colorado, they're using it this way, and that is, the commissioners themselves are taking the pledge as their signature anti-violence, uh, campaign for, um, Domestic Violence Week, or Month. So that's just a different way, that different people are, are using our materials, they're using our information, and using our pledge as their signature campaign.
Perhaps we can combine the Domestic Violence Week and this sometime in the future and, and tell that we care about the whole, the whole list.
Yes, yes.
So we just had them last week with our proclamation for, I think it was last week. So, I just have one question.
Sure.
So Pete, uh, do you still have the peer helpers then, when you're saying that you don't have funds?
Yes, no, we are, but, um, in order to transport within the district, you have to...
Okay, so you just don't have transportation funds, right?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause that would be really sad if that went away, so...
Oh, yeah, no, that would never happen.
Okay, all right, very good.
Wonderful, all right. Well, thank you, and keep spreading your message, it's a good one.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of a proclamation designating October 19th through 25, 2014, as National Hands and Words are Not for Hurting Week in Marion County.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so I'll move in second to approve, I got the dates wrong, October 19th to 25th, as National Hands and Words are Not for Hurting Week in Marion County. Is there any further discussion? I don't hear any, so we'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and then as we do, and we have a copy in our booklet, and we have a...
I think that's the prior copy, so maybe...
Well, then let's pass these down.
Yeah, that would be good.
Latest version.
All right.
Commissioner Cameron, would you go ahead and start reading that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, um, in the matter of proclaiming October 19th through 25th, 2014 to be National Hands and Words...
In the matter of proclaiming October 19th through 25th, 2014 to be National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week, proclamation reads as, whereas a community without abuse and violence is a dream we all share, and whereas any form of mistreatment of another is abuse, and all people have the moral and legal right to live free of abuse and violence, and whereas each of us must come to understand that it is within our personal power to choose not to use violence and abuse, abuse others to resolve conflict, and?
Whereas we recognize that respect for ourselves and others is key to developing healthy relationships at every age and in all circumstances, and whereas the principle of nonviolent resolution of conflict must be taught to our children and practiced within each of our families, and whereas verbal and emotional abuse can be just as damaging as physical violence to a person's self-worth, creating scars that are carried for the rest of his or her life, and?
Whereas verbal abuse such as name-calling, insulting, and belittling frequently escalates into simple force by, like pushing, grabbing, or slapping, in the worst scenario, it's escalation to rage, serious violence, and even murder, and whereas we, the commissioners of Marion County, together with communities around the county and overseas, recognize the Hands Are and Words Are Not for Hurting Project's pledge is an effective tool in abuse and violence prevention education, now therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of October 19th through 25th, 2014, to be the 17th Annual National Hands and Words Are Not for Hurting Week in Marion County, and encourage all citizens of Marion County to join hands and hearts, united as a family and community, to pledge both privately and publicly that I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others. And we have a signed copy for you, Peter, Pam.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and again, keep at it. Our next item is a bit of a continuation, has been mentioned here in the public comments section, we consider a second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending the noise code provisions. Now, we were prepared to act on this a few weeks ago, but we just didn't feel like enough notice had been put out, and I've seen since then, and perhaps Joe or, or Commander Schultz will, uh, will tell us all the things that have been done since, and then we'll get into the, the crux of the matter and decide where we wanna go.
Sure, thank you, commissioners. For the record, I'm Kevin Schultz, the operations commander for the Marion County Sheriff's Office, and I think, Commissioner, what you're speaking of is, uh, community notifications of the potential ordinance change, and, um, I think it was about September 25th that the board had put out a news release, and what we had done since then is, is we took that release through the sheriff's office venue, Flash Alert, and actually made community notification, uh, Flash Alert, and that notification goes out to all the media outlets, to include radio, TV, and newspapers up and down the valley. We have several hundred subscribers, uh, community members that subscribe to Flash Alert, so it went to them, and it also has selected business, business partners throughout Marion County that have signed up, so they have all received that notification, and in conjunction with that notification being sent out, our community resource unit has also pushed it out via social network, a social network venue, so, um, and then the only other thing, I think there was some conversation, we have followed up with a letter, um, to the Hitch and Post, and there's also been at least one, maybe two conversations with the Hitch and Post, uh, with our code enforcement staff.
Okay, so we're a lot better, we did everything. I noticed the Statesman picked it up, I saw the article there, so feel better about that, and maybe I'm getting out of order a little bit. You said there's been a couple meetings, I don't see anybody here. We've had the public hearing, but I would like to know if there's been any, any, uh, specific comments that would be relevant for us to know about, or, or questions, whatever.
Right, uh, there's, there hasn't been a face-to-face meeting, but there's been phone conversations between our code enforcement staff, uh, two of our code enforcement staff and, uh, Mr. Wright, and...
Excuse me, though, I'm not really looking for, you know, individual, I just wanna make sure that, that the county and all those potentially affected have got word, and if there's been any comment back, but I'm not trying to interrupt what he said, but I don't wanna make this specific to one...
Sure.
...organization.
Yes.
Um, for the record, Joe Finnemore with Public Works. Um, I spoke directly with at least four people that called me about this, about this change. Um, one was a commercial realtor, wanted to know what the effects would be. I invited them to come, to show up or provide a written comment, and they chose not to, and there was another person who was part of a neighborhood in South Sagam, an unofficial neighborhood outside the urban growth boundary, that wanted to know what the changes were and the effects, and the other two were just citizens that were interested in what was happening. And that was a result probably from the newspaper article.
And no great concern, at least negative concern that's surfaced, okay?
Correct. In addition, Public Works sent a letter to the constituent who requested the board consider this to begin with...
All right.
...at the hearing.
And commissioners, if I may add, in, in, in pushing the, um, notification out via Flash Alert, most all of our neighborhood watch associations throughout the county are subscribers to that also.
All right. Questions or comments, then?
Yeah, this is great, thank you for the additional efforts, it's, it's just, as we talked about last time, it, we were interested in passing it, it's just that we wanna make sure that everybody knows that we're passing it, so that people don't come back after the fact and, and say they weren't aware, so, we've made a really good effort.
Joel, excuse me, perhaps then we get back on track to how this ought to be, if you'd talk about just exactly what it is, the meetings we've had, the hearings we've had, go through the history, and then we'll get closer to be able to make a decision.
All right, if you recall, the county was getting complaints regarding a business in the urban growth boundary with a lot of noise late at night, particularly music. The code, noise code at that time, had an exemption that exempted permitted commercial uses from the noise code. City of Sagam noise code did not have the same provision, so the board, you chose to amend the noise code to remove that exemption for commercial properties inside the Sagam, Kaiser urban growth boundary. You had a public hearing on the matter at that time, and, and a constituent showed up and asked you to consider a similar change for properties outside the urban growth boundary. And we met with the board, um, the, the current code includes an exemption in Section 84-080I that allows any level of noise that is made in conjunction with any permitted commercial use outside of the Sagam urban growth boundary. In order to address the complaint, and the constituents' request of loud music being played at night by permitted commercial uses, the board directed staff to develop an ordinance to consider. Um, the proposed ordinance amends Section 84-050, 080I, and removes the exemption for sounds created or produced by specific devices such as radios, musical instruments, that, those types of items. The board approved it initially, and read it by title on September 14th board session. We came back two weeks later, and you directed us to do more outreach, which we've, which we've done, and had, and had some results. At this time, the ordinance, um, the ordinance needs, will need to be read a second time, then become effective 90 days later. So the option for the board is to read the ordinance by title and have it, and have it take effect in 90 days or take no action at this time, and we'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
All right. Are there any other questions? All right.
Mr. Chair, I'll, um, move that we consider a second reading and adoption of the ordinance amending the noise code provisions as presented.
So it's motion for the chair to read the second time, and then do we adopt separately, or how does that work? We don't do this very often, so...
No. Usually, we do the reading, and then you take the action.
Okay, so then the first motion would be for the chair to read by title only once, right?
Once.
So, I'll withdraw my, uh, motion I just made, Mr. Chair, and I'll move, uh, that you, that the chair would read the ordinance by title once.
Second the motion.
All right, just to be clear, this is the second of those, second time we've done that. So the motion is moved in second to approve reading by title only. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that motion passes, and I'll read this then for the second time, rather short. This is an ordinance amending and updating the Marion County Code, Chapter 8.4.5 relating to noise, and now a motion for adoption.
Mr. Chair, I'll move adoption of the noise ordinance as read.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the adoption of the noise ordinance, Code Chapter 8.4.5, noting that it'll be effective 90 days from today. Any further discussion? And all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes, and thank you for all your work. It's been a little bit long, and perhaps we'll give some more relief to the community and make life better. Thank you. Our next item is to hold, open up a public hearing to consider adopting the first supplemental budget for fiscal year 2014-15. Jeff White and Rich Meinecker, if you'd come up and go ahead and start. Good morning to you both.
Appreciate this opportunity to be here to discuss the first supplemental budget for fiscal year 14-15, and I'm gonna turn the time over to Mr. Richard Meinecker after that.
I'll second the good morning, and I am Rich Meinecker, the Finance Department, and I see, as usual, by the time we get to the budget, the crowd is dispersed. Uh, we'll, we'll go on. I'm here to present the first supplemental budget request for the Marion County Fiscal Year 2014-15 budget. Oregon revised statutes require the increase, that increases to appropriation authority from the original adopted budget must be adopted by the governing body. Public notices of this supplemental budget were published in the Statesman Journal Newspaper in accordance with statutory requirements. The budget information is available on the Marion County website and at the board's office reception desk. Details of the first supplemental budget were reviewed by the Board of Commissioners at Management Update on October 6th. The first supplemental budget increases the total county budget by $495,417. Hereafter, during my discussion of the budget, all amounts will be stated to the nearest $1,000. The first supplemental budget is exclusively to prove appropriations for, for all departments to cover a 3% cost of living or COLA pay increase in accordance with collecting, a collective bargaining agreement, and further extended to exempt employees by the Board of Commissioners. The general fund total budget will remain unchanged with no additional resources. The general fund total budget will remain unchanged with no additional resources. Contingency is reduced by $695,000. $596,000 of this is allocated to personal services of the eight departments that comprise the general fund departmental operation. $99,000 is allocated to transfers out to other funds to cover COLA costs as follows: $30,000 to the Child Support Fund, $1,000 to the County Fair Fund, $17,000 to the Dog Control Fund, and $36,000 to the Juvenile Grants Fund. These cover the full COLA cost. In addition, $9,000 is transferred to the Central Services Fund to fund a portion of the Board of Commissioners' office cost, and $5,000 is transferred to the District Attorney Grants Fund to also pay a portion of the cost. The Central Services Fund budget will increase by $403,000, of which $394,000 is administrative cost recovery revenue, and $9,000 is the previously mentioned transfer from the general fund. To repeat the result of the general fund transfers out, the Child Support Fund budget will increase $30,000, the County Fair Fund budget will increase $1,000, the Dog Control Fund budget will increase $17,000, and the Juvenile Grants Fund budget will increase The District Attorney Grants Fund budget will increase by $5,000 due to a previously discussed increase in the general fund transfer, but also by reductions in materials and services and contingency that will fund the remaining $10,000 needed to cover the $15,000 total COLA costs in all other funds has been funded by reduction in contingency. Notable reductions are Building Inspection Fund, $40,000, Community Correction Fund, $77,000, Environmental Services Fund, $59,000, Health Fund, $777,000, and Public Works Fund, $314,000. Although the countywide cost of the COLA is $2.4 million, much of it is funded by shifting budget authority to personnel services from other expenditure categories. A shift between expenditure categories does not cause a fund budget to increase. The first supplemental total budget increase of $495,000 is a result of the $396,000 total increase in resources and $99,000 in transfers between the general fund and other fund. That concludes the presentation. Are there any questions?
I think you go ahead.
Couple of questions. So, the 1981 and Sheriff's Grants, I was listening for that, and I didn't, it's a networking capital shift, so that's a little bit different, right?
Well, yes, this was a last-minute skip by me. I skipped a couple of small ones that are on my notes. One is the County Clerk Fund has a $2,000 reduction in materials and services to fund the COLA cost, and the Sheriff's Grant Fund has a $2,000 increase in networking capital to fund the COLA cost.
Okay. All right, yeah, that was the only one on the list that was on the overall budget change, was the Sheriff's Grants. And then, just to make sure that I'm clear, and I think this is correct, the $495,000 overall, when you do all of the additions, really, that's not a revenue increase to Marion County. It's because we move money around in the budget each time we move it out of a fund and into a fund, it gets in some ways double-counted, right? So if someone were to look at our budget and say we have, we just got another half a million dollars, we didn't, the money, there is no more money. This is all within monies that we actually approved originally in the budget. We're just moving some things around. Is that correct?
That's mostly correct. We did increase the budget of the Central Services Fund by adding some administrative cost revenue.
But that revenue comes from other departments.
Yeah, right. So, even though, you're correct, so...
Right, yeah. It's not, I mean, it doesn't come from...
It's not an outside source spread.
Right, exactly. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. You ready?
The only comment, Mr. Chair, I guess the only comment is, thank you for the great presentation that you gave us. I think it was on the 10th that you gave us a good presentation on this, so thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I will move that the Board close the public hearing and adopt the first supplemental budget for fiscal year 2014-15 as presented.
I'll second.
All right, so moved and seconded to close public hearing and adopt the first supplemental budget for fiscal year 2014-15, and I'm going to add the approval resolution that does that. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Again, thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Because it was on the 6th they gave us that presentation.
That's the end of our action items in public hearing this morning. What's left to do then is to read the places we'll be together in the coming week, and that starts tomorrow morning at 8:00. We have a City of Salem, Marion County meeting. It'll be at the Sassy Union, 1244 State Street at 8:00 a.m. Friday, 7:30 to 8:30, a follow-up meeting with the Honorable Jamis Rhodes, Sheriff Jason Myers, and District Attorney Walt Begla. That'll be in the District Attorney Conference Room, 3rd floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem, here at Courthouse Square. And then Friday, 11:00 to 11:30, a re-entry legislation update with Beth Hayes, and that'll be Board of Commissioners' office, 555 Court Street Northeast, 5th floor, Suite 5232. And then Friday, 6:00 to 9:00, a Marion Polk County Medical Society event. That'll be Red Lion Hotel, 3301 Market Street Northeast in Salem. Monday, the 20th, and I believe I just saw that both these meetings were canceled, management review and management, or calendar review and management update. They were listed for 8:30 and 9:00. Tuesday, 12:00 to 1:00, Family Building Blocks Dream Builders Luncheon Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street Southeast in Salem. Next Wednesday at 9:00 is our weekly Board of Commissioners' meeting here in the Senator Hearing Room, 1st floor, 555 Court Street in Salem. And then Wednesday evening, 5:30 to 7:30, the Marion Soil and Water Conservation District, 2014 Annual Meeting at Creekside Golf Club, 6250 Clubhouse Drive Southeast in Salem. Anything else to add this morning?
Well, just that Commissioner Cameron and I had the opportunity to go up to Mount Angel last night.
Oh.
They had a candidate forum, and it's always fun to go up there, and...
I have a lot of friends there.
Ed McKinney was the moderator, and he did a great job of keeping time, and they had, they're actually revising their charter up there and went through a presentation on that that was interesting. And then Walt Begla spoke to the ballot measure on marijuana legalization, and unfortunately, his, the other side didn't show, so he considered arguing both sides because he's an attorney, but then they allowed him just to stick to the side that he had prepared, so it was, but he did a very nice job, so just wanted to mention that.
Pretty well attended.
Yeah, for, yeah, I mean, it was the first rainy evening of October, and, but it had a nice crowd.
Monies always seem to care, they really do. Expect there to be. Anything else?
I think one of the things that keeps coming up was the ability for us to get out to the community with our meetings, and something that we'll want to consider, but I also thought about that, is that we are out in the communities individually a lot and getting that feedback. So, I remember you, the three Commissioners, coming to Turner one time for a meeting. Still was during the day, but it was out in the community, easier people to get, but we've had this discussion about how CCTV can help us in the future with communication, but we, something that you hear, and yet making it so that staff could be there and be supportive would be kind of interesting to see how we proceed in the future.
I'd like to get out somewhere. It is a good opportunity to really meet people and get a, normally get a little feel of what's really important to the community there that we might not get otherwise, so we'll forget that, organize and get to the other ones. I know it's hard.
We're doing it quarterly, and then when we moved back to Courthouse Square, we, and with the appointment and all of that, we kind of, I was just thinking last night, we haven't really done it since before we left the Maps Building, so we can talk to staff and start...
For next year.
Yeah, and start, and we can talk about it at our full-day meeting that we're having, longer than two-hour meeting.
Let's not call it a retreat, but I know what day you're talking about.
Right, exactly. But one of the things that I did say is that if you look at our agenda today, so we approved, we ratified a union contract for 40 employees. We did have a nice proclamation on Hands and Words are Not for Hurting. We approved a supplemental budget, and we did a second reading on a noise ordinance. So if we were to have that meeting in the evening, would any more people have come in the evening than came today? I mean, that was kind of my point last night, that we really worked, like on that Turner meeting, or it was Omsville, we were in Omsville, right? Or were we in Turner?
It was Turner, right after the flood there.
It was Turner, but it was right, yeah, it was right after the flood, and so it was timely, and there was an issue that the community cared about, but if we were to take this agenda into that same meeting, I mean, people would kind of go, ah, you know, it's...
I think we've always been aware, I think of the justice courts and going up to state and not in a, in a regular meeting, but a presentation. We've always been willing to do that, and I think we'll watch for those opportunities when some, and like Woodburn and the urban growth, I know we've gone there. When we have something specific to a community, I'd like to encourage us to be able to be there for that issue if we can.
And oftentimes, we've gone to city councils. I know we've been out to Kaiser when they've had issues with their urban growth boundary discussion. We've been out to, we went up to Jervis to their, and talked with their city council about some items, so we do that.
Jefferson Mill City. It's always fun, too.
And the breakfast that we have, those are before working hours.
And open to the public.
Right.
So, I wanted to talk about, I'm a little tired this morning, I don't know if you can tell, but I went with Commissioner Craig Pope from Polk County to a retirement party in Douglas County and Roseburg. So it was rather long, but I'm really glad I went. A lot of, the fun stuff, it was kind of a roast. You could tell this is Commissioner Doug Robertson, he became a Commissioner in 1980, dearly loved, and you could really feel it in the room, but they got after him. One of the things I laughed at is apparently he's a bit of a hoarder, and for 30-some years, his office has been filling up, and they talked, they took five dumpster loads out, they said...
Oh, you're laughing, Commissioner?
Yeah, I know.
Well, you should have seen the dumpster loads when we moved out of the other building here. This is like the scaled-down version.
Yeah, you've had these automatic cleanups, but he's had 34 years, and he moved out all his stuff, including, they said lots of plaques he just kind of had to say goodbye to, so, you know, a long career, but, so then the final, the facilities came in to do a final cleanup and lifted up something out of his desk, and a bat came out.
Oh, my gosh.
So they had a Batman outfit for him. We got a big kick out of that. But just some, some thoughts, maybe how lucky we are, maybe how lucky they are. Douglas County's been so dominated by timber and lumber, that's all their revenues. I know you work down there a lot, and, you know, they got excellent roads, library, and...
A museum.
In my old business, they have free garbage disposal. I mean, it's all paid from timber monies, but those monies are going away, but what they did do right, and it's kind of a lesson always for all of us here, government, even personal lives, is, you know, they're always saving for a rainy day, and frankly, they're much better shape than the other timber, really dependent counties, but that's still winding down, so you could hear it, you know, yeah, we, lucky we set this money aside. My thought is, you know, you need to set aside in the good times and take care of the bad. The problem that we all have in our lives, you don't know when the good times are, but you find out when the bad times are enough, and just encourage us to keep that in mind as we make our budgets, to be set in aside and know that it isn't always keep coming in. But the other advantage they've had, you know, so timber-dependent, but one industry, you can really feel it. It was all timber and lumber dominated in the room, and that was their concerns, and that's their relationships, and while all that's been good since Owens Act was formed, you know, that's going away, and I got to thinking how much better we are, although we, you know, the number-one ag county, but it's still a diversified product, and in many ways, we're luckier, in better shape. So it was interesting, and I just enjoyed the devil out of it, but coming home about 1:00 and then not being able to sleep, I kind of drug in this morning.
Right. Well, if the courts had said we can't farm anymore in Marion County...
Yes.
We would have had a similar situation.
They just haven't thought of it yet. Is that what you're telling me?
Well, I'm just saying that, I mean, it wasn't...
When they take away your natural resources...
Right, it, yeah, I mean, we're lucky that we have farmland up here, but at the same time, they're forest lands, they're farming trees.
Sure.
Right, exactly, but they're not allowed to harvest the crop, if you will, which has caused them huge problems. I have to say, though, their county fair, I mean, I love our county fair, but theirs is...
We met at the fairgrounds.
Theirs is just awesome, and I went there, it was a long time ago, it was in the 1990s, and LeAnn Rimes was just starting, and she came, and it was just like wall-to-wall people. I mean, as far as the eye could see, they had this whole arena filled up, I mean, just the numbers of people that come because it's kind of the regional event, and so, the people from everywhere that come to their fairs, just amazing.
Well, we have ours early in the summer, maybe we could just hold it down there. Nice place.
Yeah, well, you know, they have their own fairgrounds, they have a large fair staff, it's, it is the event. Everybody volunteers there, they go there, you know, the town kind of shuts down during the fairs, so pretty amazing.
All right, anything else this morning?
Good to see the rain.
If not, we'll call this meeting adjourned.